Tape is on, Roberta. Seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, con is a quote to Page and Kane, please call the roll.
George Coziel.
Here.
Joe Vano.
Here.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Michelle Sarwas.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mike Wearden.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the last meeting, chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, moved that we approved the minutes from February 3rd, 2022.
Second. Moved by Joe, seconded by George, in discussion, please call the roll.
Joe Vano.
Yes.
Bob Picaro.
Abstain.
Michelle Sarwas.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
George Coziel.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Okay, we have on the agenda tonight a text amendment. Who's going, who wants to do the speaking first, Roberta? Okay, go ahead. Do we have the newspaper article, the mailings and the news, I'm sorry, the picture of the sign?
No sign, just the public notice.
Public notice.
Requirements, and I actually have not yet received the certification, but I do have proof of publication in the newspaper.
Okay, mark those as exhibits A and B.
I would also like to enter in as exhibits B, C, and D, the three letters submitted from Austin Hopkins.
Okay.
That we gave to you yesterday, okay?
Go ahead. Shouldn't this be in the record? And we also have here, well, this is part of the letter, right? Will we have this, the second one?
Do I, Austin, do we have those? No, do we have those?
No.
We need to, we have to have this as exhibits for the clerk. You'll give us copies then? Okay.
Okay, so we'll add those.
Are those, what are, how many are those?
It's AMTA, American Massage Therapy Association.
Oh, just how many, is there?
Two, two new letters.
Two new letters, okay, so we're at B, C, and D, and those are E and F then?
Okay.
Correct.
Our clerk just needs a copy of those for the record. Are you ready? Okay. So currently massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses are permitted by right in commercial districts as a personal service under the zoning ordinance. And as directed, staff has drafted the attached text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would A prohibit massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses in all commercial, industrial, public lands, and in certain planned development zoning districts. B, it would allow massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses as accessory uses to certain principal uses such as medical facilities, beauty salons, parlors, physical therapy, chiropractic, and physicians offices. C, it would permit massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses by right in the office research district. And then finally, it would allow massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses in certain planned development districts or in planned unit developments where office research uses are expressly listed as permitted by right, such as in the Blue Heron and the Southwind Developments. Staff does understand that hair and nail salons may also wish to offer massage therapy as an accessory or ancillary use, and this attached text amendment does address that issue by requiring these uses, a beauty parlor or salon, to also apply for a massage establishment or bodywork approach license if they want to do, have massage or bodywork proposed as an accessory use to their permitted use of a salon. Also included as part of this text amendment is the elimination of non-conforming land uses. If this text amendment is approved, the establishments currently located in a commercial zoning district would become non-conforming and would have a three-year amortization period within which said uses shall be discontinued. And that ends the presentation.
Roughly how many establishments with that effect right now, do you know?
So that would affect five uses that I know of now, we have one that has not opened since COVID, we're still trying to validate if that is going to continue or not, but I would have five.
Can you provide the locations?
Yes, so we have a map, the locations are at 337 South Prospect, 140 Bartlett Plaza, 191 East Lake Street, 949 South Route 59, I have one that we just issued the permit for at 1689 South Illinois Route 59, and then the last business establishment would be at 850 West Bartlett Road.
The 850 West Bartlett Road would be in an area that would be permitted?
That would be permitted, yes, that one is zoned OR and would be allowed to stay.
I'm sorry, where was that one?
Right there, where Christie's pointing on the map, there's currently one located at there, and that would be allowed to stay.
As long as you have the map up, I was disappointed when I started to read this ordinance, it talks number of business districts, B1, 2, 3, 4, I don't think all of the members of the ZBA are familiar where these are located, that map with those areas plainly spelled out with the locations of the businesses should have been provided to us. Is staff going to read the entire ordinance, or are we going to?
I was not, no.
Discussion at this point?
No, I was not.
Mike?
What, reading the entire ordinance?
Right, is that going to take place, or are we going to go into discussion?
We typically don't do that, if you have specific questions outlined in the ordinance, we'd be happy to address those.
Okay, I'll start, I have a number of questions, comments, and I find it a little difficult to try to figure out what the exact proper order should be, so I'm just going to bring my points up and we can go from there.
If you have certain questions that might be pertaining to any legal issues, I would prefer that we have our village attorney sworn in at this time.
Okay. Is your right hand, do you soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and position.
Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, Maraz, M-R-A-Z, I'm the village attorney, my office address is 111 East Irving Park Road, Roselle, Illinois. I don't need to be sworn in to answer your questions with respect to the legal document, which is the proposed draft of ordinance before you, but I would like to, at a later point after answering your questions, give a little history of some of the efforts and prosecutions of various businesses at the different location over the years where massage establishment licenses or previous prior to that business licenses were suspended or revoked. Just so you get a little background as to the issue, we have in our licensing regulations, I believe, a good and we're proposing to improve it more regulations with respect to these type of businesses, so we have chapter 29A in the zoning ordinance dealing with massage establishments, and we have 29B. Mr. Maraz, could you speak up for three different? Dealing with Asian bodyworks establishments, you should understand, we can regulate the businesses, we don't regulate the licensed massage therapist, those licenses are issued by the state and not by the village. We've had a number of situations where, and it takes Yomans effort by the police department to investigate allegations, there have been several instances over the years of charges of prostitution, and those have been a process where complaint issues to the licensee, whether that's the massage establishment licensee or the business licensee previously, and the village prosecutor prosecutes that hearing before the village president, and there is often a disposition, but I've been the village attorney for over 30 years, and with respect to these addresses, there's been a number of businesses that have been bought and sold at those same locations, and often it's when the village issues a complaint relative to the illegal uses going on, take it through a process, there's going to be some disposition, whether it's a suspension, a fine, and a revocation, and the business owner sells the business, and we start over with a new, often a new massage establishment in that same location, so. Is that microphone turned on? Pardon? Is that microphone turned on? Oh, pardon me, okay, I just need to speak into it better. Okay. So.
So I just, I want to make sure it's very clear to you that there are two issues with this massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses, before you tonight is the zoning only, this is a text amendment in the zoning ordinance, the second prong of this is the actual licenses to specific addresses and businesses, that is not before you tonight, what is before you tonight is the zoning and the zoning districts that this would apply to and that we are amending, okay?
So I was giving you background as to where this proposed text amendment came from, but I think it would be more appropriate if I answer your legal questions first, if you have questions about the ordinance itself, and then I could get back to this other licensing issue. So if anyone has any specific questions.
So basically, we're proposing just to allow this in farther out areas not busy commercial strips.
That's.
That, that map, that, this map before you identifies the areas where massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses could locate if this text amendment is passed.
But my, my point is they would be more isolated than areas closer to downtown, wouldn't it be easier for them to get by with things that we don't want them to do?
That isn't, that is not a zoning issue.
The fact that they're going to be eliminated from B1, B2, B3, et cetera, isn't that a zoning issue?
Yes. Yes, that is, and that is the text amendment.
And I, I find it difficult because I don't know where all these areas are, I wish I could look at a map and say, oh, it's going to take out all of the Route 59, and it's going to take out all of, or disallow Route 59, Streets of Bartlett, and whatever, whatever other areas there may be that I don't understand from these codes, so I feel that I'm asked to make a decision here tonight, and I don't have all the information I need.
What would you like, what are you looking for?
Do you happen to have a zoning map that you could?
Copies of map.
That's a zoning.
It's very difficult to see back here to really try to identify.
Just, just like you, just like the, the areas were marked with the red, why can't we have been provided a map that would have identified B1, B2, B3, et cetera? I look at that map and I can't, I, but I can't see that, that should have been provided to us in the packet.
Roberta, the map that's on the website has the B1s in red, B1, B2, is that available for you to pull up instead of this one, because it'll, it'll better highlight based on color the different zoning districts? I mean, I know what George is asking for, and I have looked at that, you know, the one that's under maps on the website.
Right, is this map? And it's available to anyone?
I have a question, under the current zoning for these establishments, if they do not operate in a legal manner currently, does the village have authority to either shut them down or fine them substantially?
Yes, and we.
In view of that, I am opposed to zoning them out of these other areas.
I, let me give you a little, I would ask you to hold that thought, we have a fairly, I believe, a good and thorough regulation ordinance, licensing ordinance, and in that there is the ability to suspend up to 30 days, fine them, I believe it's up to $1,000 for each violation, and when particularly egregious revoke the license, there's a process, complaint, the answer, there's a hearing and then a disposition by the mayor, what's happened over the last 30 years is when you work through that process and we find, let's say there's a determination or a finding of guilty of the violation, they turn and sell the business, and then there's a new massage establishment that moves forward, there is a provision if there's a revocation that they can't reopen at that same location for a number of years, but they often sell before the whole prosecution process is completed, so, for example, in Bartlett Plaza, now Streets of Bartlett, there was a corporation, they operated for a while, the sign is still there, classic massage, but it was a different corporation, it was originally Time Massage of Land Inc. doing businesses, classic massage, that went back to April of '21, that owner sold to an individual named Victor Lane, and he, there was an employee of his that was arrested for prostitution, and in that instance, it was very blatant, he had invested some money, he paid the prior owner, he then formed an LLC and applied for a new license, applied for a license, so he was actually operating without a massage establishment license, they just, they sold their business, they opened up shop, the landlord approved of an assignment to the lease, and that business was shut down, but it didn't go through the whole process, it wasn't revoked because they up and left and he sold it to another company, MT Tang Spa Inc. doing businesses, Chate, Chatu Massage, and that's the current owner, they're represented by Mr. Kelly, who's here this evening. So there are a number of these, 377 South Prospect goes back to 2015, the Asian Spa, Fenling Spa Inc., A Plus Therapy, all have operated out of the 377 South Prospect site. There was one, 2001, 1000 Westerns Road, two individuals, Sands and Sook, doing businesses, Salon 59, they were revoked, 949 Illinois Route 59, it's currently the Zen Spa, but it's had roughly five different owners, originally the U Spa, and there's been various complaints, there's been a 10-day suspension, a 10-day suspension, a 14-day suspension. 140 Bartlett Plaza, we just spoke about, that's the, in the Streets of Bartlett, formerly Bartlett Plaza, 191 East Lake Street, prior owner, Kim, doing businesses, J Spa, was revoked in 1999, sold to a new business, doing businesses, Q Salon, there's a new one that has applied that Roberta mentioned that the license will issue, they opened, and they just did their filing for an assumed name, it's an individual doing businesses. In any event, there's been a history of problems, the village has tried to prosecute those, we believe that the best solution is to downzone them in this manner, the one current massage establishment on West Bartlett Road that zoned OR, the village has had no trouble with. The, if we were to take the total area of the OR-zoned property in the village, it would comprise roughly 1.85% of the village, or if you exclude the forest preserve district, 2.35%. Currently, the B1, B2, B3, B4, and commercial PD sites account for 3.37% of the village, or 4.28% if you're excluding the forest preserve. As Roberta said, we also have a number of accessory where we're allowing it as a permitted use accessory to the businesses that she mentioned, so you have those areas where it would be allowed as well, but it's in connection with those other businesses, so legally, if the village board were to approve it, or hopefully you would recommend in favor, we believe that this will be a deterrent, and the, when these types of uses are involved, they're often in strip centers currently, they're often scantily clad workers are out in the shopping center, we've got complaints from the neighbors across the street or the other patrons of other businesses in the shopping center, and that is not that uncommon, so there is an effect on the neighbors who are near those areas, there's an effect on the other, negative effect on the other businesses in those same shopping centers. The part of the area out west, it's part of, for example, Bluff City, that's a planned development, and there they allow commercial, industrial, and OR uses, it would be allowed there, so there is some commercial out in that area. So I don't know if you have further questions, I could answer questions with respect to the ordinance itself, but the village has the ability to adopt ordinance, ordinances if there's a, you know, rational basis for it, it has the legal ability to gradually eliminate uses if they're incompatible with the character of which they're made or located. So these uses have secondary effects that arise from them on surrounding properties, neighboring businesses, neighboring residential uses that are negative.
You mentioned something about scantily clad people, is this, they're trying to get business in there, these are employees walking out like that?
No, I don't think that was the purpose, they just, that's how they're dressed and they're outside smoking or whatever, and, you know, people are walking, they're coming in that shopping center with their kids, you know, picking up cleaning, or for instance, on Prospect, or Ro Homes across the street facing it, you know, and there were those, several instances that I can recall, at that location, I don't remember which of the litany of owners that was on that particular site, I think it was when it was the Asian Spa, which was a predecessor owner that had it from February 2015 through September of 2015.
Did staff get any calls or comments or emails from anyone in the public while the notice was posted?
I had two FOIA requests, and I don't think anybody came in, did they?
No.
No.
Okay.
These businesses that we've had problems with in the past, was this, there's, the massage, was that their sole service that they provided, they were not combined with a nail, you know, nail salon type of thing, I mean, you know?
That's correct.
Even on a smaller scale, that it was solely massage?
These were solely massage, there was a time period when the way of these businesses, and Bartlett is not unique, it's happened in other towns as well, where they set, because the state licenses massage therapists, so there were non-licensed by the state, a practice that was basically commonly known as Asian Body Works in the state, it wasn't regulating that, and so the village moved to plug that gap to try and regulate that, but what we've seen more recently is arrests with licensed massage therapists. But what we've seen more recently is arrests with licensed massage therapists. Not just these Asian Body Works practitioners, which aren't, weren't regulated by the state. In theory are now, but in practice, they are not.
When was the most recent case that we've had an issue?
Excuse me?
When was the most recent case that we've had an issue, a legal issue or enforcement issue with them?
November of, roughly October of two thousand twenty one. So just a few months ago.
And then, so how would we address someplace like a Hand in Stone or Massage Envy that is a huge franchise? Could be a lot of, you know, tax money for the village. But they certainly are not going to, a franchise like that is certainly not going to go into what I would consider kind of a hidden spot in our village. They want drive-by traffic, things like that, understandably for somebody, something so big.
They wouldn't be allowed, except in those areas, you are correct. And the village can't draft an ordinance to make an exception for a nationally, you know, a franchise of, a national franchise. They're all separate. And come up with a classification to eliminate others. So there has been, if one were looking at the statistics, many of them were owned or operated by Asian operators. That's not to cast dispersion on them. That's just the facts of what occurred. But the village could not come up with an ordinance that said, well, those aren't allowed, but a nationally, a national franchise could operate.
Of course, yeah.
So if we're correct, this ordinance would dissuade some of those larger franchises from operating if they only want to operate in a commercial district. Again, so some of the smaller operators may be willing to do, be accessory to some of those accessory uses. But in terms of a standalone, we're talking about the OR areas that you see up marked on the zoning map. And as I said, where we've had one in the OR district, we've had no trouble.
In the areas where these businesses occur today, what's the problem in that we can't monitor, control, and enforce the rules that we have in place today? Why do we have to try to put them in areas in remote parts of the village? And what's there to say that when they're in these new, very remote areas, that enforcement will take place and take place in a manner that we better like?
So the police, these businesses, in the old days, you had a smaller police force. They recognized the officers more frequently. And originally, you would use Cook County Sheriff's deputies to work undercover. They often had a mandarian prosecutor. They stopped that process. The police department works countless hours sending officers in undercover. And you have to, it doesn't just happen each time. It's a slower process often where they want to be familiar with the customers. So there's, by the time we get one of these arrests, there's been numerous undercover investigations to see if the rumors, they usually often used to start with a complaint by a neighbor or by someone who witnessed what they believe was going on. And that generated the investigation of that site. Now there are some websites on the dark web or whatever it may be where people will talk about sexual experiences at this place or that place. And then, but that isn't something that could be prosecuted. They have to be investigated. And there has to be an occurrence of a violation that would start this whole process. So that's what has occurred.
So the problems of control and enforcement today will probably be the same problems tomorrow in these new areas.
Well.
I'm afraid that these new areas, and I hate to use this term, it's almost as if we're creating a red light district.
It's, I wouldn't agree. I think it will be a deterrent to some effect. As you said, there will be some people who won't want to go in the industrial district. And so we think there will be fewer. We don't think they'll all move into those areas. But we, you cannot just have exclusionary zoning to exclude a use from your village. So like adult uses, they can be allowed in industrial areas. Do you want them there? Do you want them anywhere? Generally, no. But you have to allow them somewhere. And in this, it's the same type of concept. They often don't want to be in industrial areas. Sometimes they are. But if they were in commercial, they're affecting more people. The deleterious effects of those things are affecting more people. Residents, other businesses more directly. Is it, we believe that there will be fewer because they won't want to go there.
I feel like the goal here is to disincentivize, if that's the right word, businesses like this from opening up in this village.
Yes.
And if it could happen to businesses like this today, what's to prevent it from happening to other businesses tomorrow?
Well, hopefully you, and you do have a village board that wouldn't do that. Now, that being said, you have the effects of, there are effects and there have been a history of problems. The regulations, even though as we're proposing to amend them, will make them better. But it's the belief that those regulations are not enough. That this would, staff's belief that this will be more effective than simply regulations that historically have not worked to solve the problem.
This proposed change in ordinance, or zoning, I should say, is going to prevent establishments that want to operate within the parameters of law from operating in areas of the district that are more desirable. Just going to flat out prevent them from doing it. Now whereas establishments that are not going to follow the law, they're going to break the law. They're going to operate as they wish wherever they are.
I agree with that. They know the system. They have an objective. And they will, I see it with just moving the problem from commercial districts to OR districts. I don't think the problem's going to go away. And they, their motivation, you've seen how they buy each other up, they come back as a different name, whatever the cases are. They'll do that, I believe, as much in an OR district than they do where they're at now. But the legitimate massage establishments are the ones who are going to be hurting because they won't have the visibility. I don't think the other ones need the visibility. They've got their dark web. They have their advertising. They get the word out through the users or patrons of their service. And in some regards, they may even like being out in a remote area more. What, so, so I see it just moving the problem. I think we need to eliminate the problem.
Let me give you an analysis of what has happened. Way back when, dirty bookstores and were allowed in towns and commercial areas. And since you can't exclude it, they were located in, by the same argument, less desirable areas. They moved them out of the commercial areas and relegated them to industrial areas. And that was not as desirable to those businesses. They didn't want to be there. So contrary to that, that, you know, we're going to have a red light district. We don't have any. And they're permitted as of right. And I think it's analogous to that. So when it's less desirable, it's a deterrent. I don't believe that you're just moving the problem. We believe that this will eliminate or minimize the problem. Not the other way around. It's not just moving the problem. We think that it'll be a deterrent in the sense that they don't want to be there. And so they may go to another town. They may choose to open there. And we would continue, you know, to monitor those. But once you have that problem, it's a long, expensive process to prosecute them. And then, and often, right now, they're often leasing space in the commercial center. They, they're rarely a standalone. In the industrial, it would be more likely that they would own their space. Not necessarily, but there is a difference. A bigger investment and more to lose when they're violating ordinances.
I feel like this is semantics here. We're saying, yes, you can open. You can have this business, but we're going to only offer you less desirable locations in the town. That's not fair.
Well, it's a problem. It's been a problem. It continues to be a problem. Mr. Hopkins would likely tell you that we need to enforce it more. There are some tools in that ordinance. But I'm here to tell you that, that that alone has not been successful. And it's not just in this town. It's in other towns as well. Could there have been more severe sanctions or penalties issued with some of these, perhaps? But that, you know, has not solved the problem. And we believe that we, you would still have during this amortization period of the use, the regulations in place that we have. Those same regulations for massage establishments would be applicable to the accessory uses. Those same regulations would be applicable to the, those massage businesses, establishments in the OR districts. But this is an extra layer of protection and enforcement. And from a zoning perspective, we think ultimately eliminating some of those uses. Are they, are they all a problem? No, they're not. I don't want to say that. And in that process, you're correct. There are some legitimate massage businesses, but on almost every one of those addresses over the course of time, we've had problems. There's been very few where there's not, they've not had these issues. And in the large franchises, they are, they've had a couple of problems, not to the level of what we have. They would be, you know, more desirable, but, you know, there've been arrests. Sometimes it's a rogue employee. But you want the operator in there supervising, et cetera. So we don't think we're just moving the problem. We think we're, it's a tool to eliminate a problem. We're reduced.
I feel like we're declaring these businesses as bad first and likely never to be proven as good. I think it should be the other way around. They should be declared as a good business until they've violated the law in some fashion.
And that, that's the issue. Excuse me. That's the issue of regulation. And we're modifying those as well to toughen them up. But almost every one of those locations that I mentioned, but for the OR, some of the newer ones, there, at least on that property, there has been violations. And sometimes it was the predecessor. And, but they are innocent till proven guilty. We do go through a process when there's a violation. And there's been penalties imposed. And that's not solved the problem. So from a zoning standpoint, we're trying to solve the problem because the regulations alone have not been effective. And Bartlett is not alone in that determination. We're dealing with that particular problem.
Anybody else on the board before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I am, I'm still kind of baffled as to what are the black arrows pointing to? And are those massage places already there? Are those PD? What is, what are you trying to tell me? Maybe I'm just a little.
This map identifies the locations in the village.
Okay.
Where massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses could be located if this text amendment passes.
Okay, so the, right. So the upper right one there, what intersection is that? I'm just, my glasses aren't strong enough to.
Okay, so that is Westgate Commons and what I call it, the NET building. It's east of fifty nine and along West Bartlett Road.
Okay.
West of Savory.
Right.
So can I just interject on that? Because Westgate, is that only the office building? Like where Bartlett Vision and Derek Dermatology is? Or is it the entire?
It's the two office buildings, yes. Where the office, OR uses are specifically listed where they can be permitted. That's where it would be allowed, yes.
So the, where Savory is, those buildings are not part of it?
Those are designated for retail, commercial.
Okay, so we're talking specifically the office suite on the west side of that development? Again, where Bartlett Vision is and where Derek Dermatology is.
That's my recollection of where the two office used, the office OR could be permitted, yes.
And then the building to the west of that. And then the building to the west of that?
Yes.
Eight forty West Bartlett?
Eight fifty, yes.
The building west of that, eight fifty.
Yes.
So does that include the retail space or where the insurance company is, where the dentist is?
It's the properties that are located in the OR. So I would say yes to both of those buildings and the two buildings in the Westgate Shopping Center, yes.
Okay, so it's that entire area?
That area.
Pretty much, yes. With the exception of the retail designated area in Westgate.
Yeah, so from 59 up into that retail area.
Yes.
Is there, whether it be in that OR district, or any of them, but I'm thinking more the one on West Bartlett or the one on Sterns, is part of this ordinance? I didn't see it. Or is it coming in the amendment of 29A, 29B? The question is, is there a limit as to the number of massage establishments that would be allowed in any OR district?
No, no, we are not limiting that, no. We are permitting them by right.
So a business today that would be facing the three-year, what have they called it?
Amortization?
Termination at, at the end of three years, they would be faced with a decision that they would have to, if they wanted to stay in Bartlett, they would have to relocate into one of the OR districts. And if there was, was not, if there was no space available, then they're forced out.
That is correct.
Is there space available in any of those sections today? Do you know?
Some of those areas aren't even built.
Not even built out, yeah, yeah.
Are there other villages that are using this type of ordinance to enforce? Or are we the first?
I don't think so.
This is somewhat novel. Cook County lumps massages, Cook County zoning ordinance lumps massage establishments, they may call them massage salons, I don't know. But they lump them with adult uses. So in effect, it's the same thing. We, I mean, it's similar. We don't call them adult uses, but Cook County, their classification has put them with other adult uses and relegated them to industrial areas. Yet unincorporated Cook County.
I still don't understand. Can you name specifically some other villages, towns that are doing this today in this manner?
Um, not on massage. Other types of uses, yes. So we looked at case law. Often, it could be adult uses, and they have been done in that manner. But in terms of another town that has, to my knowledge, adopted what the village is, is proposing, no. I, I would hearken back to the county because I think that's a similar process.
I will say there are some towns that allow massage establishments and bodywork approach businesses as accessory uses, similar to B. That is not unique to Bartlett. We have, we did research, and we have found several towns that have regulated those establishments in that manner. So in conjunction with a doctor's office or a chiropractic office, they allow massage establishments as an accessory use. Health clubs, gyms, yes. So that is not unique.
But it would force the independent business, the single-use business, the entrepreneur from opening unless he wanted to work under a chiropractor or a beauty salon or whatever appropriate business. If I wanted to open a business.
You would allow it in the OR district.
So you could go to an OR?
Could go to, if you wanted to just do a massage establishment as a principal use, you could go to the OR district or the PD district where OR uses are specifically addressed in those development agreements.
Anyone else?
No.
At this point, we shall open it up to the public. Are you going to call names?
Yes.
Okay.
Austin Hopkins.
Make sure that's on there.
Please raise your right hand. You soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Go ahead and state your name and address and.
My name's Austin Hopkins, nine seven six, South Chippendale Drive, Bartlett, Illinois. I've been, it's been to speak for a while now, obviously. So I want to start off, obviously, I'm opposed to the zoning and the text amendment. It's, it's kind of a slap in the face to massage therapists. I understand where staff is coming from. And I'm so glad our village attorney is here tonight and spoke about some of the incidences in the past because something did happen in 2015. And at the time, the village board asked if I would sit down and speak and talk with the village attorney. We met. That's where we came up with the other licensing for practitioners of Asian bodywork. Obviously, Illinois is now going to regulate them. So that, that aspect has to be changed. But there was some other great stuff that got put into that ordinance. And so I want to share with you guys what has happened since 2017. Because I FOIA documentations after that ordinance was passed. And I wanted to see, almost as an independent audit, I wanted to see what was happening with that type of ordinance that went into effect. So let me cite some of the things that I found in there. And now, given the, given it, there are things that are redacted. There are things that I am not entitled to. But from what I have found, this is what I found. And this goes into what warrants a zoning change. And this is information that you need in order to make a zoning change, which is very much important for a zoning change. So here's what I found. Since 2017 to today, which is 2022, I know the past couple of years have been crazy, zero code violations have been sent to any massage establishment. Two complaints have been reported to the police department to a massage establishment. That's on record. Zero fines have been issued as it relates to code violations. There has been, unfortunately, two arrests. But as our village attorney stated, one of those establishments didn't have a massage establishment license. So technically, there's only been one arrest at a massage establishment. And if you want to claim two, then that, in fact, that location would not have reopened up. Because within our ordinance, it clearly states that if there is an arrest for prostitution, that's a revocable offense, which happened in 2017. However, the village decided not to revoke it. I, I don't know. But now here we stay, it's here we stand at this. There has been one letter sent to the village from residents or business owners about one establishment. So that's what I have found. Yes, the police have been called out to some of those establishments. Yes, the police do compliance checks. We also touched on enforcement. It's very hard to enforce these places. Well, I can tell you, as I stated to the village board, my theme at that, when I spoke to the village board in November, was curtains in the windows. If you can't enforce curtains in the windows, how do you enforce everything else in your ordinance? This is an easy thing to drive, when you drive by. Our ordinance clearly states you have to have an unobstructed view into the waiting room area. So as our village attorney stated, that they're walking around scantily clad. Okay, great. From 2017, there's no documentation that that ever existed. And if it did, I was not able to get that information or that information was withheld from me illegally. And if that takes place, that gets reported to the health inspector. A code violation is then sent. That's the proper procedure in that case. I want to keep moving on. Again, enforcement. How many times you think, these are such an issue. Staff says this is such an issue, this is such a problem. How many times is it enforced? Well, there's an email response saying twice a year that it's being enforced. And I will tell you, in the, since 2017, I'm going to say it's about 62 months of, of the establishments that have been opened since 2017. There's a couple that I, for some reason, I didn't get the applications for, which I was part of my FOIA request, which I'm a little concerned about. But we'll say there's three establishments. Of those 62 months, there's been eight inspections by the health, by the health inspectors. Doesn't sound like a lot of inspections or enforcement to me. However, I will, on the behalf of the village, I will say that the police do compliance checks. It's not as many as what the health department does. I don't want to go into the numbers and specifics of that. That's a police issue, and I feel like the chief of police should have been here to, to talk about that.
One clarification. The health department, at what level is this?
Um, I, I don't, was Bruce, is, is his health inspector, is that his official title? So he's employed by the village.
Village, okay.
Yeah, he's employed by the village. And he will go in there and he will check to make sure that business hours are posted. He will check to make sure that the therapists are licensed, are properly licensed. He will check for state, make sure that they have their driver's license to match up those state IDs. He checks to make sure hot water is working and things like that. But again, there are several times where he went there, noted on his reports that the blinds need to stay open. Sometimes he marks that he's done a re-inspect, but there's never any documentation that he's gone back to re-inspect. And then the curtains and the windows violations, those, those stand. You can drive by some of these establishments, you can, you can't see in, and that's a problem. We gotta, we gotta figure out a way to enforce that. Staff also mentioned about the accessory use. This is kind of, I'm glad they're putting this in here because this is something I asked for back in 2015 because a beauty or nail salon, they can operate as a massage establishment or they can have massage there. And before, the village couldn't regulate them. So I applaud them for adding that in there. However, I should let you know that that will increase enforcement time for the village and staff and dedication because there are 15 to 20 beauty salons in the village that all of those now have to be enforced. You have to go in there and make sure they're not doing massage. That's going to take up staff time. But hey, I'm okay with that because that is an option. After that three-year period, as one of the commissioners mentioned, after that three years, one of their options is we can open up a nail salon and still have a couple rooms in the back as long as, I believe, if the percentage is 20% of the business is not dedicated towards massage, we could stay in business in those locations. Franchises are not allowed. If this passes, franchises will not be allowed in the village. Or the, yes, they could go on the west side of town. But again, these franchises do look for desirable locations and higher traffic like off of Route 59 or, or off of Route 20. That's important. As the village attorney stated, that they have their issues too. As far as I know, I've been working at Massage Envy for the past 10 years, and I've looked into this. I have not seen any arrests for prostitution or human trafficking. Yes, there are occasions of sexual misconduct. But again, in the past 10 years, in this area, north in the Illinois area, I have not seen any or heard of any. We also have, the village attorney talked about the percentage, how it's about 2% will be dedicated that where massage can go, and currently it's 3%. Well, if you look at the map, yes, it's going to be about 2% because you look where Blue Heron is out there, and that's a huge piece of, huge, huge piece of land. So that percentage is somewhat, somewhat jaded in that manner. You know, I can go on and on. You know, the, the adult, the adult bookstore reference that he made, again, why, why are you, why do you have to loop every massage establishment in with adult use? I understand that maybe 40 years ago, when that was brought up before the internet, that was a thing. But today is different. There are so many different styles of massages. There's so many different modalities. And there's, and there's other massage therapists here that will speak to that, and they will talk about the differences in that. And you're wiping out a whole licensed profession saying that, well, if you want to work in the village of Bartlett, you're going to have to go work for a chiropractic office. You're going to have to go work in a medical facility. Now, I, you know, right now, I work for Massage Envy because I'm, I need the flexibility. I have a son. I need to dedicate my time to that. But one day, I'd love to open up a medical massage business, but I wouldn't be able to do it in my hometown, somewhere that my family has called home since 1938. Wouldn't be allowed. Wouldn't be allowed. And that concerns me. And that doesn't just concern me as for myself, but that concerns me for other potential business owners. People that are in schools now. What do we tell them? You know, that you're, the, you know, 10, 15, $20,000 that you're spending on schooling, Bartlett doesn't care. Bartlett views you as an adult use. And that concerns me. Back to my original point, and I'll finish up. It is enforcement. And the ordinance that the, that the village board will look at, it does strengthen enforcement. But enforcement doesn't do anything unless if you actually do it. And I'm, as I'm going to state to the village board, I'm going to say, village board, you need to give staff directive to enforce it. I laid out for the staff, they didn't even want to hear it when I had to sit down with them, easy ways for them to enforce it and make sure that all areas are covered without making it invasive, without increasing a lot of staff hours to dedicate to this. One thing I did find that I, all through all my FOIAs, is everything is kind of all over the place. There, there looks like there's an organization, and I think that's part of the issue with the enforcement, is that there's stuff kind of all over the place. People have to look for different things. Things aren't properly dated. The inspection's scribbled on. They're not even official massage establishment forms. They're for food establishments, and they just cross that out and put things on there. So I think there needs to be updates to that portion as well. I, I will, I mean, I could go on and on and on, but I will yield my time. But, Mr. Chairman, I would love the opportunity, before, even before the public hearing is closed, if staff, if there's something I need to rebut, I would love the opportunity because I do have a lot of information with me. Statistics and facts from the past five years that I can recall if I see any discrepancies. So again, I appreciate your time in this matter, and I want to remind you that massage therapy is not sex work. I want to make that clear. And voting for this, if, voting against this does not mean you support prostitution or human trafficking, even if that's what staff wants you to believe. Thank you for your time.
Please raise your right hand. You soundly affirm the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead and state your name and address and present your case.
My name is Lynda Moore. My address is 3435 Grand Boulevard in Brookfield, Illinois. I have been a massage therapist for 30 years after being a psychiatric nurse for 20. So I changed professions because of my interest in massage. My experience in massage in those 20 years has been spa franchise, like Massage Envy. I used to work for them also. I've also worked for the complementary medicine program at the Loyola University Medical Center. I've been a massage educator for 20 years, and I've also been the chairperson of the Illinois Department of Finance and Professional Regulations for the state board. So I've worked on the state board here in Illinois. I currently own my own practice. I volunteer as the president of the Illinois chapter of the American Massage Therapy Association. And I am board certified through the National Certification Board for Therapeutic Massage and Bodywork. I always have to take a breath after that one. And through them, I'm also hold special certification for military veterans massage. And I'm also an approved provider for continuing education. So you can see that massage therapy has multiple aspects and can really do a lot of benefit for various people. Sitting here and listening, if I were to open up a business here in Bartlett, I'm not sure if my clients would be able to come. The clients that I work with specifically are ones with medical issues and things of that sort. I really, having worked on the state board, let me put it this way, having worked on the state board, we- board, we have looked very hard at how to understand this issue, because it's faced in a lot of different cities. I looked at the Bartlett ordinance that you had mentioned, and it is really, I'm impressed with that ordinance. And I feel that if the monies or situation would be to enforce those issues, or enforce those restrictions within the ordinance that you already have, is definitely going to be of benefit. As some people on the board here mentioned, in isolating things, you're basically creating, as you said, a red light district. I just also wanted to mention, the attorney was mentioning the Asian and body workers. There is currently a Senate bill in nineteen thirty that they're working on to get licensure for the Asian body workers. So they're looking into really organizing and licensing that aspect also, because they are exempt from the Massage Therapy Act. So I'd really ask you to please vote no on this ordinance, and see if there's a way that we can look at enforcing the rules that are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorina Bain.
So I guess they've signed these, I don't need to swear them in separately, right? I should, okay. Raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth? Please state your name and address, and present your case.
My name is Lorina Bain. My address is four-two-eight Mill Street, Batavia, Illinois. So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm the director of the massage therapy program at Elgin Community College, a licensed massage therapist in the state of Illinois, and a board-certified massage therapist. I also serve as a commissioner on the Commission for Massage Therapy Accreditation that accredits massage schools internationally. The Oxford English Dictionary defines a profession as "an occupation in which a profession, knowledge of some subject, field, or science is applied, a vocation or career that involves prolonged training and a formal qualification." Massage therapy is "an occupation which involves applying a knowledge base that can be found in the Massage Licensing Act here in the state of Illinois." It is also a career that requires its licensees to prove training from an approved educational program of more than six hundred hours, which could be argued as prolonged, and pass a licensing exam, which is used in forty-six states as the National Massage Therapy Licensor Exam. Massage therapy is also an occupation that requires a license to practice in the state of Illinois, a formal qualification. As another indicator of massage therapy as a profession is a professional organization, the American Massage Therapy Association, who stands for integrity, respect, and dignity in our profession, and holds its members to ethical professional standards. I ask the board to contemplate why this profession, who is as legitimate as physical therapy, occupational therapy, aesthetics, is being singled out and discriminated against. What other licensed professions have been regulated to the fringes of a community? As an educator, administrator, and therapist in northern Illinois, I would like you to also consider the impact of the potential proposed action. When initially Bartlett enacted this ordinance several years ago, multiple municipalities used this ordinance in creation of their own. Cities as far away as Peoria have looked to Bartlett's ordinance as a solid ordinance to amend and use. In this capacity, Bartlett has been a leader. The current ordinance may not be perfect, but it's good, as evidenced by many others using similar versions of it successfully. I ask this board to consider, is this actually a zoning issue, or more likely, an ordinance enforcement issue, which would negate the need for a zoning change? Please consider the impact of your decision to all the stakeholders involved, and vote no to this change. I would be happy to work as a consultant, free of charge, on anything that comes down the way for you as a town, which I know there are many other professional massage therapists, who would also welcome an opportunity to make a positive impact on this profession in your town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Kelly.
Please raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Go ahead and state your name and address, and present your case.
I'm sorry, Michael Kelly, K-E-double-O-Y. My address is one-eighteen Bartlett Avenue, Bartlett. I've been an attorney in Bartlett for thirty-nine years. Tonight, I'm here, I have, I'm speaking for several owners of massage spa businesses in Bartlett. The Shoe Tie, Ms. Tang is here with her daughter. A-plus, Ms. Lynn is here. And Vivian from Zen Spa is here. So these are the only group that I'm speaking for this evening. Number one, I'd like to thank this board. I know how hard you work, and I don't know if everybody here knows that you're volunteering your time week after week. So we, as a village, I certainly appreciate it. Some of you have been here for decades, I know. So we appreciate it. And I appreciate, even though I strongly disagree with this ordinance, I appreciate the hard work of the staff. They try very hard, and it's an honor to be here with Mr. Mraz, who's undoubtedly the best village attorney that I know, although I disagree totally with what he's said here this evening. To address, and I just have a few comments, but before I do, I just wanted to address just a few of the things. And by the way, I want to thank Mr. Hopkins and the ladies who spoke a lot of the statistics I was gonna use. I'm not, I'm not gonna bore you. We, we're identical with what they, so I can totally support what was said under oath from these people at this spot earlier. I just want to, just make a comment about, if, just to me, practical sense. I've been here thirty-nine years. I'm a sixty-six-year-old man. I got a business that supposedly, who's ever coming up with this ordinance, thinks it could be trouble, right in the middle of Gorski's parking lot. Well, let's move it out, way out to Blue Heron, where it's nice and private, and nobody's out there. What's more likely gonna happen? Where's the bigger problem gonna be? Is it gonna be out there, or is it gonna be here? It's gonna be, we know there's gonna be way bigger problems when any business is stuck regarding people in the evening, out in the middle of nowhere. If this, if these businesses are required to move, someone on the board said it earlier, and I couldn't say it, have said it better, what's next? Certainly, we think, we know we have a good board, and this present village board isn't gonna hurt anybody. But there's gonna be many, 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 many village boards after this. And you've given them the gun. You said, "Okay, here it is. You can kick somebody out." And who's gonna be next? And we know there'll be somebody next. Maybe not next year, maybe be five years. But the precedent will have been set, and you can't unset it. As far as the time devoted, I appreciate there's been inspections in over forty years here. Yes, of course, there's been problems in every business. But I tell ya, if we just examine bars, where's the more police time spent? Trouble at bars, or trouble at massage spas? I'll bet every dollar I have, ever will have, that it's hundreds of times, maybe thousands of times more time, has been spent fixing problems, fights, traffic accidents, DUIs, underage drinking. And that's the bars. It's, I'm not beating on the bars, but nobody's asking to move the bars. And then lastly, just any comparison to the Asian massage in dirty bookstores and adult uses is just completely unfair. These are ladies that have children. One of the daughters is here. These are fine ladies, and to compare it like that is insulting. So, in my view, this ordinance, due respect to the board, or to the staff, is discriminatory on its face. The ordinance clearly discriminates against Asians. It deprives them, and will deprive them, of their property rights. There's no mistake, Asian is used throughout the ordinance. I don't see any other race. I don't see Irish. I don't see anybody else. I see Asian. This proposed ordinance would do no good, in my view, would not help anyone. Instead, it would just discriminate against these hard-working people. I don't know what makes a Massage Envy, and I have nothing against Massage Envy, what makes a, they're fine organization, but what makes a Massage Envy, or a Handstone, or whatever it's called, what makes that good but an Asian massage bad? I don't know. But that seems to be the idea. These people, they are, they're U.S. citizens. People here need to know that. These people came to America, they worked hard, they became citizens. They weren't born into it like me, or most of us here. They worked at it. They built these businesses by their own hard work. They averaged, I asked them, they average each seventy-two hours a week, an average. They never get a vacation. They work every day. So they work incredible hours. They don't hurt anybody. They provide a valuable service. They don't hurt the committee. They don't get any TIF money. They don't get any BTO money. They don't ask for any money from the taxpayers. They follow the law. They are licensed professionals. They have to get licensed. They're inspected by the village. They should be inspected by the village. This town has, we know, dozens of gambling establishments. They're in nearly every restaurant and bar. Studies have shown that gaming is a major cause of family breakdown, domestic abuse, and suicide. I have seen no move to prevent gambling. I just see it expanding. Every few months, there's another one. In this town, we have dozens of bars and liquor stores, like I said. Countless, countless studies have shown that alcohol contributes to domestic abuse, family breakdown, drunk driving, alcohol-related vehicles, accidents, fatalities. But like I said, I don't see any move, ever, to keep bars out of this town. Massage therapy, as may have been indicated earlier, I'm sure no expert. I just read about this before I was here. But it has a very positive impact on mental health. It's, many studies have shown massage therapy helps with anxiety and depression. Studies have shown a direct causal relationship between massage therapy and help for those who suffer from anxiety and depression. The Journal of Military Medicine recently published research that found massage therapy helped military veterans suffering from pain, worry, anxiety, and depression. Massage therapy is a part of almost all post-traumatic stress disorder treatment for veterans. To me, in my opinion, the ordinance is discriminatory and unconstitutional on its face. These owners are single moms, and the sole source of their income for their families is their business. They, like I said, they're on the path, they are United States citizens. They pay their taxes. They've invested their life savings to buy these businesses. These businesses aren't cheap. They have borrowed or used all their savings. So this is everything to them. That's all they have. If this ordinance is passed, it'll be taken away from them. They'll lose everything. All of their work will have been nothing, just throw it away, because they can't have their business where they built it. The village, as was said earlier, they have many rules to enforce them, enforce them. Don't just throw these people out. If this ordinance would effectively, and that's where due process comes in, this would effectively steal their businesses, because this, this three-year sunset provision is really worthless. If you force, if you know a business has to shut down in three years, it has no value. Who's gonna buy a business, if they wanted to sell it, that they know is gonna shut down in three years? Oh, great. We don't shut it down this month. You got thirty-six months. But you can't have it here, so nobody's gonna buy it. The ordinance targets dramatically the majority Asian citizens and business owners. And again, in my opinion, it's discriminatory on its face. The ordinance ignores the medical benefits that massage therapy provides for those suffering from depression, anxiety, as I said. The spas are singled out, not on the basis of harm to the community, of which, really, I've not heard any, but evidently on the type of business, and again, on the Asian nationality of the people. These spas are licensed by the state of Illinois, or the, excuse me, the therapists are licensed by the state of Illinois and the village. And they've asking nothing from this government, except the right to operate a business, and to raise their children, and to follow, when they came here from Communist China, they were told was the American way, that they could build a business. And if they did good, and they worked hard, and they followed the rules, they'd do well. Well, they work hard, they follow the rules, and they're being told, because other people do bad things in other towns, which I don't know where they are, probably Chicago, then they're gonna be punished. I think this ordinance is very unfair. It's the most unfair thing I've heard of, that I really think about. I can't remember any more unfair. So I just ask you to, to consider voting no. Don't take away these people's business, and don't take away their savings, and everything that they've tried so hard to build. Thank you.
Thank you. You can fill it out after you speak. Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Please give your name and address, and you present your case. It would be helpful if you would remove your mask, so that we may hear you.
Yes, my name is Rudy Phan. Address sixteen-eighty-nine Illinois Route fifty-nine in Bartlett. I am never good at public speaking, but tonight, I feel I shall say something, because if I don't, people will just start assuming things, and think what they, and do things that they believe is right. And oftentimes, when you don't speak up, people speak up for you, but not on your behave. So I think for a lot of people here, they know that, firstly, creating a business, being an entrepreneur, is hard enough. And now, you're kind of telling them, instead of helping them, you're actually trying to tell them, "Oh, actually, try to find a doctor, try to find a chiropractor, try to find a salon, go work with them." Where are they gonna try to, like, firstly, if I was a salon, I'm not gonna create more rooms, right? I'm not gonna create more room and say, "Here, work with me," you know, like, firstly, there are not enough space, right? And if I'm a doctor office, even though it will bring me more profit, there's no way I can talk with the landlord and say that, "Okay, give me the room, give me the space nearby. I want to add two more massage rooms." That proposal is just not feasible at all, in my opinion. You could come to, you know, like, newspaper, or like, Facebook, or wherever, try to, and try to partner with people, but that is just extremely difficult. And making, again, as I mentioned, creating a business is hard enough. And what I think the way they shall do is help them, at least not to, you know, like, make it harder for them. And secondly, you know, if my understanding is right, like, now, all the massage business has to go these certain zones, I have a few comments for that. We have already mentioned in the past that if a business wanna do bad things, regardless where they are at, they will do it. I mean, try to move them from one space to another is not gonna solve the issue. It's almost like your child made a mistake. You tell them, "Don't make the mistake at our house. Do it somewhere else," right? It's not gonna fix anything. So... So that's my first comment. Second comment is, the zone is so limited now, it's like we're putting all the businesses into the same spa. How are you going to have five massage therapy in one comments? That is impossible, right? That is not feasible at all. It's not really about fair. I don't think, that is just purely, I couldn't think of the word. I don't have, I don't have, you know, like a perfect language. I can't describe like the way that, you know, my prior professional had described. But imagine you own a business, you own a restaurant, right? A taco place. And now you're going to have all the taco places go to the same comment and say, all right, go have fun there, you know, and see who will survive, right? And like firstly, by doing so, firstly, let's just say a place that is doing prostitution, I will continue to go there anyway, right? I will continue, because I mean, and plus maybe like it's even better for me because now when I go there, nobody's going to see. I have more interest to go there than ever. That's number one. Number two, for good business, right? For good business, like, you know, like the man over there, she has mentioned, her client has to travel now further than ever to actually go to see her. That proposal would just create more problem, if not, you know, fixing the problem, right? I mean, like, a good customer, they would not want to go, you know, like now they have to travel very far, like what kind of problem is going to fix? In my opinion, not very much. So I think, you know, like there are ways to fix the current situation. And sometimes it's assumed that, oh, you know, like, oh, massage therapy is kind of like sex work, you know, like I think that, you know, like if we are trying to, if the act that the village is proposing to do, if we pass that essentially, we'll kind of tell the public, yes, that's what we believe. And that just create a culture that we are not welcoming any business, you know, if your profession has something that is, that is not like, that has some dark area, right? Like, you know, like Mike mentioned, like liquor store, right? I think anything has double side, right? You can't, you can't completely eliminate one thing just because of, you know, it has, it's not perfect, right? So, you know, like passing the law or the act, in my opinion, will just create more issues, if not, you know, like fixing the issue for the reason that I mentioned above. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address and present your case.
I am Natalie Pendergrass, and I reside at twenty-two South Alfred Avenue in Elgin, Illinois, where I happen to also have my own massage practice. That is the second location that I have worked out of, now out of my home, which is zoned by the board. Thankfully, our board was also willing to hear my case, and I was allowed to get special zoning. But I said, that's my second location. My first location was a storefront on Larkin Avenue, a main busy street through town, where I was able to find a reasonable rent, where I was able to also open up three massage rooms and provide a reasonable rate to my fellow massage therapists who had also graduated alongside me. Lorana and I went on to continue teaching. I have now been teaching at Elgin Community College for nearly twenty years and have educated many massage therapists who have gone on to be wonderful therapists. Massage therapy, like some sitting here in the crowd. Massage therapy can do so much for so many. And I don't know if any of you have ever received the benefits of massage, but I personally have helped clients who are unable to walk, that had been through PT and seen doctors and still were wheelchair-bound or stuck with a walker and could not do the stairs in their home. I was able to get them back to walking freely on their own and able to use their stairs and make it to their bedroom. I have had clients that have been told by their doctors that they were going to need a shoulder surgery. They came to me and within a couple of sessions, they were showing their doctor how now their arm works, and their doctor was amazed how they no longer need a shoulder surgery. I train people to do things like that because people like you don't always want a surgery or need to see a doctor or want a medication. They might want a way to actually heal their bodies with hands-on therapy that can, has been proven historically to be beneficial. Massage therapy has a very long history. It is one of the most old traditions, yes, prostitution as well, and we cannot help that. We cannot control the fact that prostitution has been made illegal and that there are people who still choose to practice that. That is beyond our control. However, we also cannot control the fact that they have not found another way to, you know, another name to go by, that they choose massage therapy as the closest thing that they can come up with because they consider themselves hands-on. That's not our fault and should not be held against us. Rather, we would like to see the villages and boards and code enforcement officers doing their jobs and enforcing what is legal and what isn't legal. Because again, all of us who are practicing legally, who are helping to improve the lives of you, your family members, your children, your spouses, your parents, want to be able to continue working legitimately, legally, and in reasonably priced places. I was able to buy that, to rent that space, and I was able to rent it out to other therapists at a reasonable rate. A friend of mine, she works for a chiropractor and has to pay a thousand dollars a month to do so. You are putting us out of business in multiple ways if you pass this zoning. It's unfair and should not be allowed to pass. It is racially biased, and I am very offended by the fact that my profession was compared to prostitution and pornography multiple times in this session. And that should not be, it should not be racially biased. There is not one race who has done this more than another. Sure, maybe with the way the laws were written for a period of time, there was that, you know, allowance for some Asian places to get away with it. That does not mean that one race should be held to a different standard than others. Again, thankfully, the state law is coming in alignment with what it should be. But now we also need everybody else, communities and people in, you know, just society, to accept that massage therapy is a real and legitimate profession. We are licensed, we have trained hard, we work hard, we get continuing education every year. I'm a nationally recognized educator. I'll be teaching at a state conference next week. I plan to continue teaching more and more professionals because what we do, again, I find extremely valuable, and I wouldn't have it any other way other than to be able to see a licensed professional who is working in the way that they choose to work, but they have found works for them and isn't dictated by working by a chiropractor, says, no, I'm telling you to do this because a chiropractor's not had our training, a PT has not had our training, no esthetician understands the human body the way we do. And we should not be dictated and governed by somebody else who is trying to run us because you want to call our jobs prostitutes? Unfair, uncalled for, and should not be allowed. And I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Let me say a few things. I'm not afraid to speak publicly. I think this ordinance change is absurd. I have been on this board for over forty-two years, and I have never been so opposed to something that came down from the village as I am today. We have had our intelligence insulted. We didn't even get a map, as was pointed out. Why would we be stupid enough to think that just moving things out to an industrial area is going to solve the problem? It is not going to solve the problem. They're more isolated, they can get by with more things. And I certainly hope we voted down and that the village board isn't foolish enough to override us. Anyone else have anything to say?
I know we're not talking about twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B, but I think the ordinance puts the cart in front of the horse.
Yes.
The, and it was nice to hear that that ordinance, twenty-nine A, twenty-nine B, is looked at in the communities as being a model. And I looked at Schaumburg's and I looked at St. Charles, and I absolutely agree with what was said. So that's the crux, I think, of the solution. I don't agree that there won't, that there will be a significant deterrent by moving the establishments. I don't, I don't see that. What the deterrent, I believe, is, is for the bad actors to, and the bad part of the industry, to look at Bartlett as being, you come to Bartlett and do that, we're going to catch you, we're going to close you down, we're going to find you. And in that vein, I have to compare it to the Bartlett Fourth of July Festival. Previously, and it might sound strange, but previously when I was on that committee, I had a discussion with a police officer. You go to that festival, and there's a massive police presence. And in speaking with one of the officers, now Deputy Chief Jeff Procolis, he said, we know who the bad actors are. And they come into the festival, two officers follow them, they see that they're not going to have any fun or won't be able to do anything, and they leave. That's the reputation of the festival. The reputation for this ordinance and this issue needs to be that strong, and that will eliminate some of the problem. So I wholeheartedly agree with what Mike just said. I think it's, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. It's sending the wrong business, the wrong message to this profession, and it's sending the wrong message to the entire business community.
I think we blew it with this proposal.
The one thing he brought up about the curtains being open at these establishments, I noticed the one in the streets of Bartlett, and it was pointed out to me by several of the store owners, that those curtains aren't open. For some reason, they're still shut. So the code enforcement needs to be improved if that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
And I think you're going to catch more of it in a busy area than an isolated area. Let's not hide our heads in the sand.
I have a brief comment. I've been on the ZBA for nineteen years. I'm trying to catch up to Mike. I'm having a hard time. And I totally agree with what he said. I have, I've never been so strongly set, in my opinion, of how this should be. And it should be that we do not approve this ordinance change as it exists today. It's the wrong way to do things. So I'm in total agreement with Mike.
Anyone else? Any final comments or motions?
Well, I'm pretty new to the board. I have a lot of years to catch up to you guys on. But I appreciate the staff's approach and understanding the problem that needs to be fixed. And as a village resident, I am appalled that we have these kinds of problems within the village, as any resident should be. So I applaud the effort that we need to do something about it. But I do think we've, are attacking the wrong problem. There has got to be something, and, you know, and maybe it's, maybe it's not just the enforcement, and maybe it's not just saying no to this, that there's something else. And I think we've had people offer to bring outside, you know, perspective and assistance to it, and there may be some other sort of compromise solution that we come up with that I think we need to look at. Because I do think we owe it to our businesses to be fair. I come from an industry who, you know, is discriminated against many times and has been banned from other towns, you know, in the years past. So I get, I get the hardship, but I also understand that we have to do something to protect the village and the residents. I just, I do think there's a different way to do it. I don't propose to know what that way is, any more than anybody else on this board knows the exact answers. But I think we need to do a little bit more investigation before we just make a swiping change that could drastically change the lives of many people.
I respond to one. Point made. I would, I understand your points. I understand the concern. I will just say, we've worked at improving the regulations. That's not, the board has looked at it at a committee level. The original ordinance that people are somewhat touting, Mr. Hopkins worked with me hours, and his knowledge was used in crafting the current regulations dealing with massage. I strongly disagree that it's discriminatory, however, the draft itself. It may fail for all the other reasons you stated, but I just can't leap that. We talk about Asian body works. That's a defined term in our regulations. It has nothing, and that may be the origins of that type of therapy, if you will. But we were specific and tried not to discriminate. One could argue, you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater in trying to solve this problem because of the number of bad actors. But the fact of what the history has been and the type of store it may have been establishment, there is no intent to discriminate against people of Asian descent. There, it happens that they, there are a number of businesses that are owned that way. But it was written neutrally. It's not discriminatory. Beg to differ on its face. I understand the points made, and we met again with Mr. Hopkins when we were proposing this, and he had some recommendations that found their way into that other ordinance. That doesn't come before you. It's licensing. We tried to attack this from a two-pronged basis because we've not been successful alleviating the problem. It's more enforcement is what we're hearing, and I appreciate your time and did not wish to offend anyone. We're trying to come up with what we believe is a solution. I made reference to adult use ordinance as a comparison in answer to a question. I'm not suggesting that every massage therapist business is a problem, but a number have been historically, and we're trying to address that. I use that analogy in answer to a question, not to cast them in that same light. County does, we decided we wouldn't do that. But we're taking, we're proposing a drastic step that we've just heard your input and opinion with respect to that, this text amendment that's before you.
Thank you. I think that was well put. Any other comments or motions? We need to have a positive motion.
I would make a motion.
Not until after the motion.
To the village board for the approval of item twenty-one sixteen, the proposed text amendment to Title X zoning, massage establishments, and bodywork approach businesses.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor at this point. I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Michelle Zarwaz?
No.
Charlie DeVoe?
No.
George Coziel?
No.
Joe Bano?
No.
Bob Picaro?
No.
Mike Wharton?
No. I have never seen this happen before. I've always been supportive of the staff, but I am not on this one. Okay, so what is the next step? This will appear at the village board at the end of the month, maybe?
Well, we will let you know. I honestly don't know when the next, how this is going to go, so. The next step is village board committee. I just don't have a date certain.
Okay. I couldn't get internet on here, so I don't even know what's the next thing on.